It's five thirty, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the Atomo City Council meeting to order, and I appreciate everybody for showing up tonight in this cold weather. And to get things started, everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Chris will go ahead and take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Cavaness? Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Gallaway? Yes. Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
The next item is to approve tonight's consent agendas or motion to approve.
Moved over.
Second. Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Epstein.
Councilmember Gallaway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes. The next item is to approve our agenda for tonight's city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallaway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes. The next item on our agenda is the City of Atomo's report to the council and the citizens of Atomo. I'll turn it over to Phil Rattner, our city administrator.
All right. Thank you, Attorney General Mayor. Is that close enough from here?
Okay.
Okay, all right. Specifically, under this, I wanted to provide an update on concerns were brought forward the prior two meetings by Kate Howard. Under the public comment section of the previous two meetings, a question was raised regarding legality of the no-weapons policy identified on the website for the Bridgeview Center. One of the members of the council, city council, had received a similar message inquiring about the policy. That message was forwarded to the mayor, who then forwarded it to my attention. The issue raised in the meetings and email identified a concern with the language on the BBC website stating prohibited items included weapons of any kind, including handcuffs, utility knives, mace, and personal security pepper spray. As stated, that language would be in violation of Iowa Code 724.28 related to prohibition of weapons in buildings owned by a political subdivision of the state. Following receipt of that email, I had contacted Scott Hallgren of Vinnie Works and city attorney to seek clarification as the contract to operate the facility would have any bearing on the interpretation of that legislation. It was confirmed that because the city owns the building, the law would apply to this facility. Since the contract of Vinnie Works indicates compliance with all federal, state, and local laws, there is not an exception due to the operational agreement. This past Thursday, the city did receive a response from Hallgren indicating a revision to the language on their website, which removed the language "weapons of any kind," including, and simply stated, the handcuffs, mace, et cetera, that were being prohibited. Hallgren also verified there was not any permanent signage posted to prohibit guns, and that if any artist or tour required stricter control, they would follow the guidelines of the law, which requires screening and armed security personnel in the building during the event times. So that is in response to those concerns. And Vinnie Works and Bridgeview Center should be in compliance with the state law. I see Scott's here. Thank you for your prompt response to that. Comprehensive plan updates, or the 2040 comprehensive plan or Atomo Law. 2040 comprehensive plan is a 20-year planning document to incorporate community input to map out priorities of the city government for the 20-year period, 2020 to 2040. A quick overview of the city's progress regarding that plan illustrates an estimated 35% of the plan accomplished, with almost 9% fully complete. And taking a closer look at summer level, there's an estimated 55% of the plan is on track for timely completion. There is about 32% experiencing some disruption, and about 4.5% at the major disruption level. And those disruptions, again, may be anything, including staffing, financial resources, political capital, time, et cetera. So it could be a number of things why that might be. And then I just wanted to highlight that next week, Tuesday, there will be a work session that will be kicking off the public portion of the budget season. And that will be at the depot.
Yeah.
For that meeting. So, and that should be recorded as well, so people can watch that later if they're not able to attend that evening. And then finally, I just wanted to provide a response. On November 21st, there was a public meeting. Iowa Department of Transportation held in this facility, and that was in regard to the reconstruction, or future reconstruction, of Iowa 149 or North Waplo Street from the Des Moines River Bridge to Woodland Avenue. That project is scheduled for 2027. And we did receive a response, feedback from that meeting. And the project will, one, improve pavement condition in that area; two, address safety concerns at three intersections; and three, update storm sewer and pedestrian facilities. Safety improvements will include the reduction of conflict points at Fourth Street and Fifth Street intersections. In addition, a right-turn lane will be constructed for northbound traffic at Fourth Street, and left-turn lanes for northbound and southbound traffic in Woodland to improve operations and safety. The department feels it is necessary to modernize those intersections to improve the safety for all users, motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians. Currently, plans for the Fifth Street intersection call for this access to Iowa 149 to be closed, and a hammerhead turnaround to be constructed at Fifth Street. That will result in the city needing to convert Fifth Street into a two-way street where vehicles can then access Marion Street to the south, or south to Fourth Street, or north to Court Street. North Waplo Street will be maintained as a two-way. The purpose of this change is to improve safety by reducing vehicle conflicts. Present condition has resulted in crashes at Fifth Street with northbound vehicles exiting North Waplo by a slip ramp at a high rate of speed. Between 2020 and 2024, there were nine reported broadside or side impact crashes at the Fifth Street intersection. A major cause, they believe, is drivers failing to stop at the stop sign, failing to yield the right ticket. During that public information meeting, concerns about closing Fifth Street intersection were made, suggesting the closure would make light impact to access to the Sonic business located south of the location. There was an observation of traffic movement during lunch period, and accounted 54 movements of vehicles at the business. Thirty-six of those vehicles were observed circling around the business and exiting via Sonic and Walgreens, or in between Sonic and Walgreens onto 149, south of Walgreens onto Fourth Street. Eleven vehicles used the egress on the Fifth Street, and of those 11, seven went north on Waplo. If Fifth Street is a two-way, then those vehicles can use the Fifth Street to Marion and then Court to reach your destination. The Department of Transportation has a responsibility to maintain Iowa 149 for the public. This includes managing access. This segment of road is classified as a minor arterial and has traffic volume of 12,400 vehicles per day. Arterials like Iowa 149 provide increased mobility through greater spacing between intersections and driveways. That improves movement and traffic, creates fewer challenges for drivers. Managing access is an important way to provide mobility and safety. As described previously, closing Fifth Street will reduce conflict points with traffic on Iowa 149, and have potential for broadside side impact crashes. These types of crashes are typically seen at intersections and can be more severe than other types. Directing traffic eastbound on Fifth Street to Marion, and then southbound on Fourth Street, or northbound to Court, will route the traffic to signal-controlled intersections for access to Iowa 149 and safer ingress. And let it close, is what you're saying. If we'd like further discuss the problem further, we can reach out to Iowa DOT District 5. So, just wanted to highlight the results from that meeting, update the public and US council members, especially with the potential for future looking at Fifth Street, or Fifth Street and the potential for two-way access on that street.
Has DOT made a final decision on when they're gonna redact the Waplo Street Bridge? Because I know that's gotta happen, they said, in the next two to three years.
We had a meeting for five years?
Yeah.
Yeah, within the next five years is their plan.
Oh, they moved it back, because originally they said in the next two to three years that it needed to be redact. So they must have pushed it back, though.
I think they're going into design on that.
Was there a response in regards to our support of the bridge in the Waplo?
That resolution was sent to them, that the council approved.
I know, I'm just wondering if there was a response to that.
Yeah. They appreciated that, and that is something that they're looking at as far as the design and working it into design. There is some question if there would be any potential cost sharing with that project, or if they'd be able to work that in within the scope of the project as designed. Yeah, more to come, but they did appreciate that. And we're not aware of all the pedestrian access across there, but it did fit kind of within what they had with this project and the increase in pedestrian access, and would continue that into that part area. So, I think it was well-received, just a matter of working out the details. And that's all I had for today.
Does council have any questions, any material with Mr. Ratt covered? All right, thank you. The next item is where we normally ask if there's any citizens who'd like to discuss any of the agenda items on our agenda tonight. And I don't see that we have any papers up here for anybody who's requested to speak. Does anybody wanna speak on any of the agenda items tonight? Okay. We don't have any public hearings tonight, so we do have one ordinance, so we'll move into ordinance.
Ordinance number 3238-2025, offending the municipal code of the City of Atomo, Iowa by repealing and replacing Section 25114 as it relates to possession of tobacco by underage persons. Recommendation has the first consideration of ordinance number 3238-2025.
Was there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Chris, would you be able to present on this?
I guess I will. All right, so we were notified by someone on our police department that it looked like our code was a little out of compliance in regards to the age requirements. So Section 25114 of the City of Atomo Municipal Code identifies the legal age for possession of any tobacco, tobacco products, alternative nicotine products, vapor products, or cigarettes as 18 years of age. State Code, Chapter 453A.2, was recently updated to reflect and identify the legal age for possession of any tobacco, tobacco products, alternative nicotine products, vapor products, or cigarettes as 21 years of age. So ordinance number 3238-2025 dates this section to match what is reflected in State Code.
Does council have any questions for Chris?
And this was reviewed by legal too, in case you're wondering.
If not, Chris will go ahead and take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallaway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes. The next item is departmental board or commission recommendations and reports. And take it away, Chris.
Contract between Area 15 Regional Planning Commission and the City of Atomo, where technical assistance is required in obtaining community development block grants, funds to be used for our sewer mining project to rehabilitate sewer mains. Recommendation, approve the contract between Area 15 RPC and the City of Atomo and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Mr. Bergmeyer.
Thank you, Mayor. So this contract will pay Area 15 Regional Planning Commission $3,500 to perform an environmental review and assist the city in preparation submission of a community development block grant application. If the application is not awarded, the city will pay no further compensation to the Regional Planning Commission. If it is awarded, the city will either pay $5,000 to the RPC for payment of that and go out for a contract to administer the grant, or if we decide to let RPC administer the grant, they'll include those fees in with their next contract. This is for a sewer lining project we're gonna apply for. It'll be a half-million-dollar grant. The city will match that percent, which is required by the community development block grants. And we're hoping to get that grant sometime. I think the application is due in July, so get that and get it. Let, you know, apply for the next one.
So the environmental review is something that you need to have done or to apply for the grant?
Grab to have that done before you apply for the grant, yeah.
Does council have any questions for Philip?
I do, and maybe this is more for Philip. So we're paying the $3,500 for the environmental review, and then if we're awarded that, we pay $5,000 for grant writing services, correct?
Yeah, we don't pay them for the assistance in preparation submission of the grant unless we are awarded the grant.
Isn't that what we pay our fee to them every year for?
Part of it goes towards the grant writing or finding of grants. And then there's the, what do you call it, the grant administration that goes towards that.
That comes out of the grant, though, right?
It can, or some of it can, depending on the grant and what they allow. Some will allow 1%, up to 3%, maybe even 5%, but it all depends on the grant and what's allowed as far as being able to recover for administrative fees. If the grant would cover all of those costs, then they could take it out of that completely. It all depends on what the grant might allow.
And I believe part of the membership fees that the city pays to regional planning also goes to support their organizational process too, doesn't it?
Yes.
So it's not all, it doesn't all go to grant writing, I guess is what I'm saying.
Correct. And depending on the, you know, the severity, but how big of a grant it is and how much work it is, then there may be more cost to look to, to try and recover as part of that.
So maybe, I guess, just for my clarity, maybe a further breakdown of what we're paying Regional Planning Commission? Like, and I know in our contract, we talked about it, and I asked questions about that, but I guess my understanding was a big chunk of this was for the grant writings and for finding, so. But I understand the need of it. So don't I just, I'm asking for more clarity on my part, because when I read the contract with them and asked the questions, that was my understanding, so.
Have we noted sewer lining projects before?
I think the last one was done like 10 years ago, because one of the first years I was here, it was just wrapping up, like in 2016 or 2015 maybe, but not since.
Are you pretty optimistic that the city will be awarded this grant?
I think the chances are good. I've never applied for one, so I'm not 100% sure, but I think our chances are pretty good. We're an underserved community, so that helps with it, so.
I know the city's got several CDPC grants in the past, and some up for your department, I think some for SAG's department, so. The other questions from council for Philip? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallaway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Thanks, you're welcome.
Authorization to dispose of salvaged trusses to repurpose for gateway structure. Recommendation, authorize city staff to give a pair of trusses to the Legacy Foundation to be used of a new gateway structure over Market Street as part of the riverfront development project.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Moved to approve. Second.
Philip, I think you're gonna take this.
Yeah. So city officials have been working with community partners to redevelop part of the riverfront in the Market Street area. As part of that project, a gateway structure over Market Street was proposed to help identify that area or distinguish it. During the design process, a suggestion was made to incorporate a pair of trusses from the Coliseum into that structure. So that would be the part going across the roadway. It would add some historical character to the improvement, and would repurpose the salvage materials rather than scrapping just for metal and cutting it up. The Legacy Foundation is taking lead on the project, including the cost, and it's recommended to grant the trusses to be utilized in the construction of that project. And I will say that we are expecting representatives from the Riverfront Committee to be present next meeting on the 4th of February for a little presentation, or bigger presentation of what that riverfront project is starting to shape into, which includes some pictorial of this gateway structure.
So I believe, wouldn't that be Phil's idea correct?
Yes.
So it's one of the best ideas.
He was on that committee and came up with the idea.
It's one of the best ideas I've ever heard, to incorporate historical stuff. But I mean, I've seen a little bit of it, and I think that is one of the most fantastic ideas to incorporate the old with the new like that. I haven't seen their progress for at least, and I think it's a great idea. And they're wide enough that they're gonna work across the street.
Right, and I wanted to give a shout out to Phil for thinking of that, too.
Does council have any questions for Phil regarding this agenda item? Pretty straightforward. If not, Chris will go ahead and take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallaway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes. Okay, we have three resolutions, so now we'll move into resolutions.
Resolution number 8, 2025, approving applications for residential and commercial tax abatements under the Urban Revitalization Plan totaling $7,370,475 and subject to review by the local assessor. Recommendation, pass it to Doc. Resolution number 8, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
All right, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. This resolution relates to 31 residential and six commercial tax abatement applications that were applied for as part of the state's urban revitalization tax abatement program. Urban revitalization is a tool that's available citywide and incentivizes improvements that increase value of commercial or residential property by abating the taxes on that new value for a certain period of time. Depends a little bit on my project. But these abatements are for 10 new homes, five new garages, three new commercial buildings, as well as a number of different renovation projects and things like that. In total, the value of all improvements is estimated at $7.3 million. And it's a really big use of the program compared to previous years. Some of that, I don't know, the assessor might look at, might take a couple of these back. We did have a couple of property owners, really one specific property owner, that did submit quite a few applications that cover maybe work that's not gonna be totally up to 10% of the value, we'll see. But that is up for review by the assessor. Even without those additional ones, though, this total number of new homes and the scope of some of these commercial projects, it's a really big year for the tax abatement program in general. And we do think it's a good program. It allows property owners to kind of overcome that concern where they don't wanna make an investment out of fear that it's gonna increase the assessed value of their property. It provides a little bit of relief for residential, you know, home improvement projects in addition, or renovation, something like that, that increases the value more than 10%. We can abate those taxes for three years, and that is a pretty significant savings. So we're really excited about the program, excited about the number of applications we have to see.
I think it's a great program. I mean, someone needs to increase our tactical evaluation, and this is an encouraging example. Definitely agree.
And the number of new homes on this list is so encouraging to see.
Yeah, there are a couple of homes that were finished in previous years that hadn't applied to the program. One way or another, they came to find out about it. And you can apply for this program within three years of completing improvements. And so we were able to get a couple of those that were put in this as well. If the resolution's adopted, then they send this on to the county assessor, and they are supposed to review. They use up permanent data, and they also will sometimes, you know, do the site, things like that, to review, and then they'll determine eligibility and apply those abatements.
Any other questions from council for Zach? Okay, if not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallaway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 9, 2025, studying the date of her own occurring and the proposal took away interest from real property at 2411 North Court and 2415 North Court to Blunt Investments Limited Liability Company. Recommendation, pass it to Doc. Resolution number 9, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation. Second.
Okay, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution relates to the properties 2411, 2415 North Court. The city owns these properties, and the council approved rezoning these properties at previous meetings to C2, which would establish the southern boundary of the Highway 149 North Court Business District to include these properties. We've received an offer from Blunt Investments for $5,000, as well as half the cost of preparing the necessary easements to purchase these properties. This resolution sets the next council meeting, November 4th, is the date of a public hearing they consider that purchase offer. If Blunt Investments does acquire the property, they intend to construct a car wash.
There was already notices and signage sent to people in that area, correct?
Related to the rezon.
Yeah. Anything back here?
No, no, we, yeah, they would've been here or in such meetings, but we haven't heard anything. I think folks kind of thought that because there was some previous local medical office or something, that that area was kind of intended for commercial development anyway. That's sort of what we've had, yeah.
And for people that aren't real familiar, this is that wooded area right behind the former North High East store, right on Court. So that would all be cleared out for a car wash.
Well, I don't think a car wash would be a business interview since it's, you know, just a presentation.
Well, there is a house that's next door to that property, though, so.
Top close.
So there will be a required buffer and screening standard. They'll have to have, and it'll take bear here at least six feet tall, and they'll also have to have a required, I don't wanna say the number, I think it's 20 feet buffer yard maybe, where they started that commercial activity to help mitigate light noise.
Any questions from council for Zach regarding this property? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallaway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes. Thanks, Zach.
Resolution number 11, 2025, approving and authorizing the signature of MOU between the City of Atomo and Eamster's local 238 for the police department. Recommendation, pass to Doc. Resolution number 11, 2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
You have to open.
Second.
Okay, Barb, I believe you're gonna take this one?
Yes, thank you, sir. This is to correct a mathematical error that we made when we were looking at the last MOU that we did with the police department. We were working on the sick payout for our employees this last pay period, and we realized that we just made a mathematical error. This was part of the whole resetting the accruals to the proper dates and proper amounts. And so, just talking with the police department, what we're doing is we're changing that maximum from 50 hours to 72 hours for that payout, which is in line with all of the rest of our employees. Like I said, it was just a mathematical error.
Any questions for Barb regarding this item? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Gallaway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes. Thanks, Barb. Okay, the next item is our public forum.
We now open the public forum portion of the agenda. We invite anyone from the audience who has completed the citizen input request form, residents, property owners, and business owners who wish to address the council on any subject, as is with the earlier public comment period. At this time, we are here as a council to listen. Council cannot deliberate on any items promised their attention during the open forum. However, they can request the chair to be placed in an upcoming agenda or connect you with the appropriate city personnel to assist. As a reminder, city council members and city staff are accessible before or after meetings.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Are any non-agenda items tonight? Okay. The next item is mayor, city council reports and/or any communications. I do have one thing that I was asked to bring to the attention of everybody regarding the 1,200 block of Brentwood. Recently, Robin Fitzsimmons is one of our employees, and his crew went above and beyond the call of duty to help that block when a house started leaking water. The street got icy and frozen, and they were able to go in there, clean that up, and make it safe. So just wanted to recognize Robin Fitzsimmons and his crew for a job well done. Does anybody have any other communications that they would like to make?
I got a little bit, we had the waterboarding day, and I do actually have some that goes along with kind of what you just said, but to some good news in... The hydro unit two that needed the repair, I don't know if you guys remember, it was gonna be like $4.1 million to repair. Well, some good news has came out of that. They found out if you can repair the bearings, they're gonna repair the bearings for $115,000, which is gonna get about another 10 or 15 years' use out of it, which is actually gonna help stabilize some rates because we're not, you know, we're $4.2 million. And also, the important is that's not bar.
And also, the important thing is that that's not borrowed money, they're, they're doing that, you know, throwing money, so that's some good news, and there'll be more to come on that. Another thing I want to say, Mayor, that went along with what you said this last night, as it was getting cold below zero, and I always like to give our, you know, city staff, water staff, everybody's staff, a shout out. We had Blaine Bryant and Jared Reed from the Water Company, so we were all snug in our bed, they were out after midnight for a water main break, working wet, cold, and you notice I didn't use the word miserable, because they aren't, they were happily doing it to get water back to their customers and had a passion for doing it. So I want to give a shout out to Blaine Bryant and Jared Reed for, you know, and, and all the, the city staff and the water work staff that's, that's keeping our city running, you know. I, I feel good at night sleeping in my warm bed, knowing that people like this are out there, the police department, fire department, the city workers, the water workers. You know, like I said, when, when we're out, cities, when we're in bed, city staffs take care, so I appreciate all of them, so shout out to everybody who gets wet.
Unfortunately, it always seems to be in really bitter cold weather or really hot weather in the summer, that a lot of these old, old water lines break.
Yep.
And it can be miserable trying to repair those when it's a hundred and ten degrees outside, just like when it's twenty below zero, but unfortunately, that's when these, you know, the city's got a lot of old, old water lines.
Yeah, but I imagine.
Yeah, and you know, a lot of stuff that, you know, I'm kind of chilly just sitting here right now, I can't imagine nine below zero in a hole of water, wet. That's what, you know, getting people their water back, so. I don't appreciate it.
So there was a water main break, a six-inch line just across the street from me, and they're down there working on that thing, digging it out, and one of the guys got soaked head to toe.
Oh, boy.
And it was cold, and, you know, they had to get him out of there, get him in a truck, get the heater on, and get him warmed up.
Then they just go right back at it?
They just go right back, don't they? Others were, were jumping in there, getting it finished up. But see, they tried to finish, they tried to do the job without shutting off the water, which surprised me, I didn't know. So they tried to keep some water pressure going so that they don't get any contamination to possibly get into the lines, but always some water coming out. But that creates problems then when you're putting that piece on there and trying to hold on, and water's squirting out, and you got, somehow it got really soaked, so. I appreciated their hard work in the, in the night, getting that done.
Is there any other announcements that anybody wants to make?
That's not as exciting, but Amida Atumwa had their wildlife weekend on Saturday, and it was a phenomenal event, and a lot of people viewed the eagles, and no one has proved me wrong, and I'm pretty sure there's a golden eagle out there. They said it's very unlikely, but they couldn't prove my picture wrong, so we're believing there's a golden eagle out there. And I also got to meet the mayor of Black Park Zoo, the porcupine, so you all missed out if you went in attendance. So next year, it'll be in January again, and I encourage everyone to attend.
One of the things that I'm probably going to periodically just bring up for the public over the next several months is we're going to have the mayor's position is going to be up for election this fall, because I do not plan to run again for mayor. And we have had three city council seats that are up for reelection, Councilwoman Galloway, Councilman Reed, and Councilman McIntyre's council seats. So we really want to encourage people to think about this, and we hope there'll be several good candidates that decide to run for mayor, possibly for some of these city council seats, because I don't know if all the council people whose seats are kind of due have decided yet for sure whether they're going to run again or not, they've got time to decide that. But I just really would like to encourage people to, you know, take it seriously and consider running for mayor and for city council this next fall, because those elections will be happening in the fall of twenty twenty-five, so just kind of shout out on that.
You say, along that line, if anyone is thinking about it in the public, last week's special work session, it had Mickey Shields from the league, and he went through kind of what the job entails and what the expectations are, so you can watch that on our, go to our website and find that, and take a little overview of what to expect, if you're interested.
It was a good informative presentation.
You know what to add to that, this is, this probably where I'll get beat up a little bit, you know, to the public that is thinking about, you know, running elected officials, it is great, it's a great way to serve your town, but I would just urge somebody to do it because you want to make Atumwa a better place. And, and you know, I always promise transparency with the public, what I mean by that is, don't, don't run just to, to get somebody, or don't run because you think everything's wrong. You know, of course, there's things wrong, but run to be part of the team that improves it, you know, you got to be a cheerleader, you got to be positive, you got to, you got to love Atumwa, don't, you know, there's two ways to join, you can join because you're negative and you think everything's wrong, or you can join and just help make the team positive, so just make sure that you're running for the right reasons, that, that the Atumwa, the citizens, our small businesses, our everything, that's what's in your heart, not, not negativity.
Well stated. Any other announcements or anything that the council would like to convey to the public? Okay, if not, we are going to go ahead and recess our city council meeting, and we're going to go into closed session this evening to review the performance evaluation of the city administrator with Mr. Raff, and then once that's done, we will reconvene the city council meeting, and then we will adjourn ourselves. We are going to go ahead and recess now, we'll reconvene in a few minutes. Thank you, everybody, for attending.